December sixth. Twenty twenty one. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of November fifteenth.
I have one current.
Okay.
Three instances on page two, the old holidays fund is listed as nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. It should be eighty-three cents. Eighty-three cents.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved.
We just under minutes, I think we do, should have a set of minutes too for a non-public that's probably pretty short set. We're running personnel, so we'll, I just don't want to lose sight of getting this done at first. Thank you.
But we don't have them in our package.
No, no, we do not.
You don't have to be next time.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Board reports.
The planning board met. We had reports regarding the budget requests of human services, library. And no, no big issues there. There was discussion of the moving the deputy town clerk to full-time and the budget committee doesn't support that.
Does not support?
Does.
Oh, does, okay.
There was some discussion, but there was support. There was discussion of moving the rep position to full-time. Very lengthy discussion on that. I think the overall, the budget committee was leaning towards approving that, but there were a couple of people who were pretty resistant. Who knows what could happen?
Kate?
And one more point?
Sorry.
Thank you. We're going to meet again on the sixteenth of this month. And at that point, we will have the salary discussion regarding raises.
We have a planning board meeting coming up this Wednesday at seven P M. And I've been working with the events committee for the Enfield Village Association on hometown holidays. So the first event hosted by Eva kicked off last Friday, which was the Town Tree Lighting Fun, well-attended. Jake's donated coffee and there was much merriment and a little snafu with the lights at the very end, but I think it's getting repaired. So thanks to the D P W guys who so nicely decorated and made that possible and to Ed Field Rep for helping partner with the village association. So they've got a nice list of events that goes all month this year and are really wrapping in some economic development. So I think there's a lighting contest together with Canaan that's kicking off and it, Meredith, is it this week at the park, this weekend at the park?
Sunday.
And so, and some of, so some of the supplies will pass on to that event at the lakeside.
Yeah, they said they had plenty of cups.
Yeah, they're in my car. Yeah, Mrs. Claus will deliver them. So, yeah, so very nice and lots of good partnerships and new ideas coming out of that and hopefully some folks joining that maybe will want to join committees eventually.
Lakeside Park meets tomorrow. As Kate mentioned, we will light the little tree that was donated by the Eastern Terrible Foundation last spring. We have some solar lights we purchased. Because it's a town function, all of the donations have been for this event have been made privately. Patty Freed has a Santa suit. Oh, I see Santa's up there. David Bouffay got drafted to be Santa. And he must have an elf in mind because he asked Patty if she had an elf costume, which she does. So that's coming together. Other than that, more action tomorrow with the meeting, which hasn't happened yet, so. And there was no November Heritage Meeting because it always falls on the fourth Thursday, which is Thanksgiving. So we combine November and December. So we will also have a Heritage Meeting later this week. Doc?
Well, I don't know very much. It's actually been kind of quiet between Thanksgiving and Christmas, but I did, we do, we do have four responses to the invasive species R F Q that we did a long time ago. I'm in the process of evaluating them in terms of the presentation, the resources, their experience, their qualifications, their understanding of the scope of the project. I am going to get back to them. Some of them, they're, they're somewhat general and I can appreciate that. And I'm going to get back to them some clarifying data that I come from public works about actually the the number of miles or acreage or square footage is a number of different characterizations that give them a sense of the territory that we're talking about and give them each an opportunity to see if they want to refine their presentation. Because remember at the, at the outset here, what we're interested in doing is dealing with invasive terrestrial species on town-owned property. Because that is where most of it is. It is a function of kind of our human activities. And so that will help us kind of, kind of refine that a little bit.
Is there a focus on one particular invasive, like Japanese knotweed?
I have identified Japanese knotweed as a principal violator here because there seems to be a lot of it around about in general, though. What we'll be expecting is that, that obviously they'll look at that, but they'll take the area that we've identified and present a plan for how they determine what's growing there. And then approach it in terms of a plan so that over the next year, we can try to address it. So as you may remember, particularly as the Japanese knotweed, there is a spring explosion of energy carbohydrates out of the root base that caused it to grow so vociferously in the spring and then toward the fall. It sucks carbohydrates back in into the root base so that it can store them up for the next spring push. So there's an approach to when you cut them down, when you apply the pesticides and how the herbicide is taken down into the root base in a timely way to coincide with basically the plant's respiration schedule. So, so it's a fairly long project and it's a multi-year project. So I'm anticipating that each year we will do as much as the budget allows, but basically repeat the scenario of monitoring, cutting, applying herbicide towards the areas that are affected until we get to the end of the town-owned managed property. And, and hopefully then over a few years, and it generally takes a few years, eradicate them. Now, currently with that, we all have the chosen entity begin some outreach and collaboration with other agencies like corporate extension, like the
Apple Valley.
Valley Land Trust and others that might have an interest to try to begin to help educate the citizens about what they can do on private property. And to kind of help them identify resources that might be available to private homeowners in terms of grants and other services as well as just paying for a private. So, so we do, I do want to make sure we do a careful assessment of the four. I actually did not expect to get four. I did not expect to get that many. But and they all bring a fair amount of expertise to the table. So it's actually a good thing. But it's, it's a little more, it's a little more work in terms of making a fair assessment and giving them a fair shot.
Yeah, I think the citizens' outreach is pretty important. Yeah, there are some private properties that really are infested. It's amazing.
And you will be held accountable.
I, I have been working through years at it. It's not fun.
We control blue, purple loosestrife, oh, about fifteen years ago, the beetles. There's a beetle that eats purple loosestrife. It took several years, maybe four or five years before it was finally gone. But it was a Girl Scout project that Lisa Torres had enough and it was very effective.
Well, I'm hopeful that both the budget committee and the future budgets maintain the funding. So that, you know, again, this is not intended to fund the whole thing forever. It's a bit, and you take it off in pieces and we'll see how the money goes. You, you folks will get to decide from year to year the continuing, you know, funding of that. I don't think this is the sort of thing that's going to go away. I think you can anticipate much like you buy salt for the roads and dirt and, and you do other things and we pay for other services that this is just part of maintaining really the beauty and the integrity of the recreational ruin, you know, opportunities in town around the lake and, and other areas to, you know, really responsibly kind of manage the invasive species. Because if we don't do something, they're just going to corrupt it wildly. So.
Now that you just brought up the budget committee again, I, I want to temporize my previous comment about the pushback on the budget committee. It was, it was not extreme, but there is some. And that was my only concern. And I, I wouldn't be surprised if it ended up passing the budget committee ultimately. I did notice a little hesitation.
And of course, no matter what the budget committee does, you three have to decide whether you want to override that somehow or present.
And we have done that in the past here about ten years ago. We presented the select board's budget.
And we decide how town operations went at the end of the day and who was assigned what tasks together with, obviously, the town manager would support that. So I think it's important to remember their job is to fund town operations that are set before them and not to choose how we do them.
And I'm not suggesting the budget committee is all at odds with the board or whatever the board wants. There's that balance and I think they've mentioned it several times. So it's not over yet. So I think so far the budget committee has been very responsive, interactive, so.
I'm pretty impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they've raised a lot of good questions.
Live discussion is, but it's important.
Yeah. That's exactly what they're supposed to do. I did also fashion and you will receive it soon. A skating club agreement.
Yeah, we have it.
As you know, some months ago, there was discussion about this skating club contracting to maintain the plowing and the steps and that sort of thing. They, they've done that. I drafted up a contract that that D P W has proved of that puts the responsibilities that they're supposed to be there. Everybody understands what their role is, what their lane is. Doesn't introduce any skewed liability one way or the other for the town or anybody else. Kind of fashioned, oh, no, not very tightly, because the dog part is a whole different, different thing, but.
They emailed me, the president, Mary Reynolds, to say that they're having a porta potty delivered. I think it's December twenty-seventh. They will fund me that.
Okay.
I saw a picture of it already.
Is it there? Because she, she had said toward the end of the
Bridget's on the
At lakeside or?
At lakeside.
Mary updated us today and it looked like it was there with
Okay.
with a sign. I had to appreciate the sign that asks people to please not put garbage or dog waste in there.
Yeah, I had given her the heads up that it was a real problem. So she said she was going to have a nice bold sign on the porta potty.
I'm not going to, it's not my decision to get in the middle of it. Skating club could obviously do it to it. Isn't it a bit premature to put a porta potty there and pay for it because the lake is even frozen?
They made the arrangements and I think it may have something to do with the porta potty company and when they would deliver it.
I do think installing it before it's like very deep in the snow might be wise. I think one, just a comment on a porta potty in general, I think people don't understand what happens when they throw waste in a potty that doesn't go there. It has to be fished out by humans.
Well, I explained that.
It's very, very serious. So it's, and it's not fair to other humans. So I think, you know, it's not just like, oh, I did my due diligence and I threw in a receptacle. It's actually, you know, asking another human to fish to human waste. It's not cool.
That was a remarkably detailed contract, by the way.
Oh, really? Well, that was the goal. Make sure everybody understood what the role was.
Hopefully it helps. It was an awesome, awesome service last year.
Well, Mary and others were very helpful in kind of contributing some of those details. I, I, I don't know if we, we have also had some discussions about how to navigate snowmobile traffic around through and to the lake so that we've got some guidance or control so that people aren't racing through the pavilion. And so the snowmobile club and, and others have been working with, with Jim Taylor to, you know, help with some directions, some signs on, on the rail trail to, so that people can know where, where, where the best part is to access the lake. So I think that, that will work out fine.
I've worked with Paul Courier in the past and found him to be very cooperative.
Yeah.
And you've explained to him what the issues are.
Yeah.
He wants to be able to cooperate.
Yeah, yeah, I think they get it. So it worked well.
That's a traditional access point. Really, they were some of the first users of that.
Yeah, yeah. I think ultimately we'll, we'll try to put some rocks along to kind of encourage people to come down the more orderly pathway rather than just tumbling down the side.
Could we, could we rock and then hay bale, you know, when you do the hay bale mistake? I just get nervous if there's a sliding accident. I'd rather have them slide and hit something like a hay bale or I, I worry if we intentionally put rocks to guide people, we might get ourselves.
Well, the rocks would be high enough on the bank so that they both don't interfere with mowing. And spaced adequately so that, just, just to help direct people to an appropriate pathway near the pavilion and that the larger pathway that we just put it for the wheelchair ramp. So just kind of some incentives to direct the traffic and manage it on that. And continuing on with snowmobiles, I did meet with Mr. Cone today. You may remember that is that the Bricknell Forest.
Yeah, he was cutting down trees on town property and making himself.
It's mostly about the access of snowmobiles to that conservation land. And I look back at the limits, I met with him today, he brought the minutes, I look back at the minutes and review the conservation easement language. And I will do a memo for you that identifies the the specific language in the conservation easement. And one of the questions that that Meredith asked back in April of last year was whether there was language in the easement that prohibits snowmobiles. And the answer was kind of affirmative. But that's not really what the document states. And so I'm going to bring it back to you with the relevant conservation easement documents and the minutes and the conversation from last year and just invite you to take another vote. But on, on whether you want snowmobiles in there consistent with the conservation easement.
Who holds the conservation easement? The land trust?
The land trust does, but you're the grantor. And so the discussion about what to authorize with respective motorized vehicles at Quail is your decision. And I am not suggesting you change any decision. I think the intention at the moment was to stop snowmobiles from access. But I also want to be clear that we understand the factual basis for that decision. And so I will be asking you to revisit it and find a new, find a, it could be the same decision, it could be the same outcome. But I want, I just want to make sure the record is clear, as factually accurate, legally accurate.
My, my perception of that was that was not so much that snowmobiles couldn't use the trail, because I've read the document also, and I don't think there is any official fact. But that he was cutting down trees in the conservation land in order to get to the trail.
Yeah, you can't.
Because that, I think, is clearly prohibited.
You can't go on someone else's land and cut down trees. And that's just outrageous to claim that that's the primary problem isn't the snowmobile. It's his cutting activity. You don't go on your neighbor's land, no matter who it belongs to, and cut their trees down.
And it may not surprise you to learn that he says that he didn't cut those.
Of course. He hasn't done them on any of the other properties he's been on either. He has a trouble all the way up and down that road, all the way to Grafton.
So he was referring to a conversation that he made with one former selectman some years ago as well as a town manager, two town managers. But that nothing was in writing, authorizing the use. So I said, well, at a minimum, because the conservation easement language suggests that something be in writing, we ought to do that. Let's try to formalize it a little bit.
And my suggestion would be if he has trouble with trail access, that he do what other people do and load his snowmobile on a trailer and drive it to the trailhead because he's also driving down the road to get access on the Grafton side.
Our conservation easement clearly states no motorized vehicles and that includes ATVs and and snowmobiles. There's an exemption for logging equipment, pulling logs out of the woods, for instance, but not recreational motorized vehicles.
And I think there's a really good reason for that too, because of the nature of the property and the water frontage that it has along the brook. You know, right where they're going to drive through, they're going to go through the path of least resistance, which is the existing trail. It runs right along the brook. There's nowhere to jump over if you're skiing or whatever in the woods. And it's just not, I don't think it's good for the environment. There are plenty of places that I believe are great open spaces for snowmobiling and pro-wheeling. And I'm equally in favor of doing that, but I don't think you want to mix pedestrian traffic with motorized traffic.
Well, I'm not intending to have that whole discussion now, but I just want to give you a heads up that I will, I'll do you a memorandum, identify that salient facts and all attached that historic documents and that we have discussion. Probably at your next meeting. Just, just to get to be clear that we've got a record that's based on the truth and the facts and an outcome that, that is documented appropriately. Other than that, subject to questions. Quiet, we can wait.
Well, I'm curious. The next thing listed on the agenda is communications. What's going on at Petromark? They're asking for beer and wine and tobacco license.
Is that Petromark?
Yeah.
Is it that location?
It is that location. That's my understanding.
What was it?
It's the, it's my understanding is the location of the Petromark.
Yeah, I saw some people going in and out of there.
I think they want to open it up and they would have to get a license to sell beer and wine.
I see.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
Just so it
Curiosity.
It's only on as a communication so that if you decide that you want to provide any comments to the state. But it's not required.
What I've done in the past, if, if we're okay with I can write a letter to that effect. That speeds up the process a little bit. Otherwise, it is something on the order of, I think, a thirty or sixty-day waiting period.
Then we, yes, that would be good if you wrote such a letter.
Yeah, I think they should have a chance to.
Look better than a closed-up business, that's for sure.
So if, if, if you find a favor with that, I'll, I'll, I'll draft such a letter that states we don't object.
Excellent. Business. And I see the Energy Committee is here. Yes. Proposed community energy plan.
So yes, we have our first public hearing tomorrow in person at the community building. But there was some feedback to us that everybody doesn't, it's getting less comfortable being in person. So we're going to do it twice. Tomorrow night in person at the community building and we're not going to try to set up any Zoom links or online. And then we're going to have again the following Wednesday, December seventeenth, online only with a Zoom link. And we'll invite people to ask us for the link and we'll pretty much do the same presentation. So either one is good. And I think that's what the communications on the listserv anyway will be that we have control at this point.
Have you had any feedback?
Yeah.
And the citizens?
So yeah, like all the listserv notices that we put out just saying here, here's what the community plan is, why we want to talk about it and things like that. We generally get two or three or even five responses. Generally, they've been very good. And so I don't, I don't expect we're going to get a lot of people, but the plan is now in draft form available at the website. And we'll be pointing people to that, showing them exactly how to get to it. It's kind of long. It's fifty pages, but the first twenty-five pages are the, are the focus of the quiz stuff. And so we'll talk about that too. So that, you know, I want to point each of the places that we'd be most interested in your feedback. There's a lot of general information on what is community power. There's a lot of appendices that go into that kind of detail and legislative detail. But, and I'll point to it. If you have already downloaded it from that link, I would point this group, the second one, to the pages that probably are like sixteen to twenty-ish. But specifically, and actually, I don't know if anybody wants a copy of the slides tomorrow. Yeah, we have all of it. Okay, you have it as copies. The, those pages of the plan really talk about what Enfield is doing and how Enfield is going to be, you know, this is, this is a template, this aggregation plan template for any of the towns and cities that want to join. And then you take the pieces that are specific to your town and customize it. And in particular, on page twenty, I would just point out the step that it's called the electric aggregation plan statutory requirements. There's a couple of areas in there that say the select board will. Although I want to point those out to you. I think they're still in orange. At least they are in my copy. They're
We just have black and white.
Okay. Organization of the structure. Upon approval of this plan, Enfield Community Power will be authorized to provide electricity and other related services to participating residents, businesses and other customers in the town of Enfield. The select board will oversee the program and has overall guidance authority. Most towns put in there with help from the community.
And the energy committee.
Energy committee and that, yeah, exactly. So we could add that as well. We don't expect the select board to just learn all this stuff. And this part is already true. The select board has appointed a primary and an alternate representative to participate, and that's Jill Ellen and myself, in the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And additionally, we will, the Energy Committee, continue to hold meetings for the purpose of providing community input. So along the whole process, but even if we decide to join, you know, we'll continue to have a meeting. The schedule of events is two public, at least two public hearings. And we might do another one in February. But we'll do these two that we've just been talking about. And then then at town meeting, we'll, we'll get a warrant article together, which I think you need before the end of the year, that one warrant article. We've already got, yeah, text. So I can send it to you anytime. And then the town meeting, you know, will vote on this plan. But I think it's important to recognize we're not voting on some pricing and some options or any of that. We're just voting that this is a good plan. And then when the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire has actual details with pricing and you can, we can compare that with our default pricing, right? EverSource, Liberty, et cetera. Then we bring it to the select board and say, select board, here's what their plan is, and we talk about it or whatever. Then you can sign the select word, sign the signs and agreement to actually go forward. So there's, you know, there's one more step to this that I want to make sure people understand. It's not, accepting the plan is just sort of the big picture.
I think most people are going to say, how's it going to affect my
Yes, exactly.
And we'll be able to answer that better as well.
Yes, well, and, and right, you won't have, you don't accept that. I will be saying, we will be saying tomorrow as part of the slide deck. And that is the most frequently asked question. And that is the most frequently asked question, as in fact, me and my pressing. We we aren't, we are writing in the plan to the two major tenants. Number one is the price will be the same or less than the current default prices. And number two. Oh, I forgot number two. It's in there.
Well, next time.
Yeah. But that's not it. If I have it right, yeah. Two major primary objectives that we've identified before we even get a lot of input from everybody else. Ensure the price is the same or better than default. And two, provide incentives and options and encouragement for reducing fossil fuels. So that's what the energy community is really bringing to this. And we're going to have the options. First of all, there's going to be options for anyone to take the base price or to take a little bit higher or whatever to get a different mix more green energy. We'll have options, which a lot of energy suppliers don't have today.
Kim, when you first brought this to us, you were a little unsure on how it would or would not affect net metering.
For those of us. We're definitely getting more and more, getting more concrete on some of those questions. Again, until we have the final word. But the good news is I've now had an opportunity to look at Lebanon, Hanover, Nashville, Raleigh, just 14 other towns involved and their their plans. And almost every one of them says it must allow net metering. So people who have solar today will be able to to use, to be on this as well. And the reason, you know, most people who have solar today aren't paying much electricity bill. So that's a piece of why the big utilities don't want us on them is because we're only going to buy a small amount of electric supply. Most of it's being, you know, coming from the sun on our local house. But that doesn't matter to this group. This group, you know, you're you're probably buying some, or even if you aren't, it won't affect you if you aren't. You're not buying any electricity, this won't affect you.
So far.
But some of the issue, I think, is is the credit that you get through.
Yes, you can't mess up your net metering.
Feedback into the system to achieve the net amount.
Yeah, and some people have the very earliest net metering, which was one to one. And so, yeah, so the goal is to not affect that at all. Again, good questions to keep asking right until we have something to sign. Like, we're not, we're not talking about something to sign. We have something to sign. Those are like the three big questions. What is the cost? Does it mean to net metering? And probably what are the options? And your abilities, how long are we signing the contract for? That kind of thing.
And if I could just just revisit some of the foundational things. This isn't going to be, this isn't going to cause an out of pocket expense for the town.
Not at all.
And so that's probably compromises. It's not going to cost anything. Yes, it costs a substantial amount of money to set up the coalition and operate and staff it, do what they need to do to identify the sources of power that ultimately they'll negotiate to provide. But they're basically borrowing that money off of the future savings from.
Yeah, actually, I'm on, I'm on the risk management committee of the CPCNH. And so the first thing we're doing is putting out the RFI and the RFP, looking for the aggregator that we're going to work with to do all the, to do all the real work. And the tenants are that they have to do an awful lot of work to help us get going before they're going to get paid. And then once we start, this program gets off the ground, then they'll start getting paid back.
And and as I recall, there's basically no default liability for the towns if it all goes bust.
Nope.
No recourse, basically.
Not going to get sued.
Right, and I, and it's not, I don't, it's, I don't know how likely it is. Like, we're, we're trying to decide right now, when is it really going to be ready to start? You know, the earliest could have been spring. It's looking like June, July. It takes a long time. Yeah.
There's a lot of work to do to actually.
Standing up an entire company.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, first of all, you have to actually hire managers that have the requisite experience to manage a million dollar operation to find the sources of power, do all negotiating, all the other documents. So it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. And the good news is we have some really good consultants that are doing a lot of this, have done it before. And yet, New Hampshire's kind of unique on this side of the country. California has a bunch of these, and there's a couple other states where everything is lined up and they've been able to to do a community power, but there's not too many of them.
And and if I could just ask one more question, is this going to be an opt in or opt out?
So that was one of the, and one of the important things that is sort of the background is that 35 years ago, we started breaking up the monopoly of utilities and said, energy is separate from transmission, is separate from distribution. And then 25 years ago, we had our 53, RSA 53E in New Hampshire that said, we can aggregate with other people and so we can pull a whole bunch of communities together and people want it. But we couldn't do this until last year when we passed HB 315, which said that an aggregator like this can require everybody to opt in who's already on default. So it's going to move everybody who's on default, energy from Liberty, EverSource, and New Hampshire Electric Co. in, in Enfield, to be on CPCNH. If if we agree, you know, if the agreement's signed. So it's opted, so you have to opt out if you want to opt out.
So you understand when that, yeah, okay.
But anybody can at any time.
So if someone wants to stay with Liberty, they have to opt out.
They're going to have to opt out if they're on Liberty right now. And if they've chosen a different supplier today, they won't be opted into CPCNH. They would have to do something to opt in because they've already made one contract.
Yeah, okay.
So it makes sense, like, it's, you know, if you've done that.
As you, obviously, it's obvious that obviously the goal is to ultimately going forward, have the community pay less for electricity than they have in the past for all the reasons identified in all documents around the internet about how the pricing is. I'll say higher than it needs to be with the BOC not necessarily representing.
Well, they can't, you know, you think about it, that's not their main job. And Liberty and EverSource have no benefit to going out there and trying to negotiate better prices. But we will.
So obviously, those are the sort of comments that might come up with that.
And having the ability to pick who is serving you based on their ability to produce and deliver and deliver good service is a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Well, Kim, you've done a huge amount of work, you and the energy committee on that. I'd like to thank you for all the hours and hours and hours that I know you've put into this.
I'm learning a lot. We both are. We go to a lot of meetings now.
But you're actually right, it's a ton of work and it's not simple work, so congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. The public attack. Proposed water and sewer rates, public hearing December 20. We just can't get away from sewers.
No, you have to draft rates that we present. Another public hearing that we have to do, and they go by the strength of saying. Another public hearing will be to accept some donations to the Massacre Electric.
This on this December 20th?
We'll do it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I decided like 20,000 today.
Oh, I should have mentioned that for anybody that hasn't heard. We got a $20,000 grant from the Massacre Bank Foundation.
And that's what public hearings were.
To go toward the match for the land and water conservation grant. So we're more than halfway there.
Yeah, I'm amazed by the number of donors. I mean, I think you guys have done quite a job to raise money.
Well, I think the park, we have a note of a lot of people. And interestingly, the private donors, most of them are Lake residents, Lake residents. I remember when Lee Carrier years ago said, other than the schools, this is the most important thing Enfield can do is to create a park there.
Let's hope everybody going forward feels the same way about it basis.
Oh, yeah.
Keeping it so it's nice once.
Because it really is a long term.
Yeah.
Issue.
Well, they will limit it to their backyard, so.
David?
David?
Do you have a question?
Sorry, I I was just waiting for you to finish the item about water and sewer rates. But before you went to non-public, would would like to make a public comment.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure all of you have been following the news. It's unavoidable about increasing COVID rates locally in the states of New Hampshire and Vermont, which are now at or near the the top of the the rates for the country. And hospitals are filling up, some of, some of them nearing nearing full. And and I would urge you to revisit your issue about mask mandates for businesses and gatherings. I realize it's not on the agenda today to do so. And if you decide not to do that, I would urge you to, at the next meeting, decide what metric you would use to do so. Because I I am concerned that whatever our best wishes may be, we may need to to really batten the hatches soon.
I would agree. We do get a weekly update from Chief Holland on numbers of cases in Enfield, Lebanon, Hanover, and Cayman. And they're chilling.
I think it's important to note, too, some of the higher numbers, not necessarily by percentage, but overall totals are higher in Lebanon and Hanover, and they do have requirements. But when you go out, people simply are not following them. And that's a real challenge because, you know, here I am with those small piles and my mask and trying to avoid people, and my kid's actively hiding behind me from the person without a mask. And I think it's just some people are done, they don't care. I'm not saying that's right, but I think maybe reiterating before then as a reminder to people that we do have a mask resolution, that there is a higher incidence of COVID currently, and just to remind them to keep their neighbors safe. And I think it's that constant messaging reminder. Some people don't even know we have a mask resolution. And I know one of the stores in town has a sign saying, you don't have to wear a mask in our store if you're fully vaccinated. And I was like, whoa, wait, that is not what we said.
Yeah.
So I.
Which store is it?
It's the larger one.
It's a, it is a consistently confused message, I think, at this point.
It is.
That the vaccination affects transmissibility and or the vaccination. Yeah, but it doesn't. I mean, the Omicron and the Delta spread equally easily regardless of vaccination status. And sure, the issue is if you're vaccinated, you might not get as sick as otherwise. But it really does come back to the mask being what affects transmissibility. So I'm not, I don't know at this point whether it's possible to actually enforce what we went through before because it's been years and I I think that's a tough field to climb. But in any, any way that I suppose we can underscore the usefulness of masks would be a good day.
And reminding people, don't go out if you're coughing. You know, if you know you are sick, you don't need to be going out in public.
Well, and avoid large gatherings.
And large gatherings. And most stores here will do curbside, even if they don't actively offer it, you call. So I think maybe some kind of partnership saying, hey, these stores, like, if you would feel safer or more comfortable, or we keep your neighbors safer if you didn't go in the store, here are some options for you. These are great options right in town. You know, Jakes is a curbside, I know Practor's is a curbside. I have no doubt if you ask the nice folks at Georgia's, they would do it for you. But I think there's plenty of options to keep people safe. I know the pizza place is still doing just through the window. And I'm sure everybody.
And Ziggy does great curbside.
Yep, and they do curbsides. So I think there's a lot, and maybe people need to be reminded that it wasn't just an option when it was received as that, and there were harder rules, but it's still an option and a tool for them.
I think part of the problem is that people are just, they've got COVID burning up.
Oh, we, I think we're all done.
Yeah, I mean.
But we can't, we can't be apathetic because that's why you get sick.
I I wish we, I I think we should talk to the owner of the large store that has the sort of ambiguous sign and say, this is ridiculous. And and make us suggest what should such a store have as a sign on the front door.
Or do we provide signs again that say that there is a resolution, right? Because before we provided signs with our wording, do we go ahead and just provide signs with our wording that are eliminated again and take care of it that way?
We're not asking the store owner to enforce through law, but we we at least put the sign on the door. And I recognize that there are going to be people who come in and gleefully say, oh, yeah, I'm I'm fully vaccinated, and they simply are.
I think the other.
Or they don't believe in vaccinations. We had an incident this week where we had to have a workman at the house. And he told me three people were, three men were down with COVID. Fortunately, he didn't come. This was a phone conversation, and he sent his one employee that had been vaccinated. But I was horrified. Now, he told me that he didn't believe in vaccinations.
We know that.
I I know, I do know people who have taken another position that anytime they hire someone, it's going to come in the house, they ask that question.
Well, I'm going to do it from now on.
And they they simply won't hire somebody otherwise.
I don't, if it can't be fixed by us, we don't get it fixed right now. And people do not come in, and I run a business. You know, it's a farm, so normally people will come in. I've oriented all of my business outside. I'll stand in the rain under an umbrella before I let me get in the house. Because I think it's so important to not. The other thing we have that's new since our last meeting is that the testing is more readily available with those home kits. So I think we could remind people that you can get, unless they've run out. I don't know if they've run out yet, but you could get free.
They did almost immediately.
Those were around, really? Right away? Yes. Because I was just saying, we're still able to order them like the next day. But I don't know if they were actually out or if they were just letting you order.
They're out now.
Mine came in, and I think many of our neighbors have them and would probably be willing to share if someone needed. I encourage everyone to grab some. So I think if we have kind of that atmosphere of sharing to keep others safe, then that would help us well.
Yes, interestingly.
It's part of the reason.
Excuse me just a moment. So interestingly, when you ordered them, if you can ask how many people in your household, they automatically sent you four packages of two test seats, so you got eight.
Yeah.
Whether you have two people in your household or.
Yeah, 20.
David?
It's, it's part of the reason that I pick and choose which which of yours and other meetings I I attend in person versus. And I, and I realize that all of you take good care, but that's not a guarantee anymore.
Any one of us could be a type four.
And I think that if you could reduce the amount of activities you do where you mix with people, certainly, obviously, we've got a bump that's post Thanksgiving. We get a little bump post Halloween. I think a lot of us can, you can draw whatever conclusion you want. But I think the general idea is that we probably should know by now that gathering causes some issues.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I think the bump started before Thanksgiving.
It was, there was a Halloween, post Halloween bump, but this is in my un, not.
Christmas and New Year's.
David, your your cautions are duly noted. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Are we ready to go into non-public?
So the rest is just informational.
I am concerned about this DES violation.
Yeah.
Multiple violations.
Yeah, yeah, no.
That's a really interesting one because that is, I've been kind of watching all of the activity on that road. And there's substantial, that whole road has had substantial activity because it's directly in view of our property.
Well, they've got multiple violations.
Where is that?
It's on our driveway, and then the Rainier is the next, it looks like a driveway, but it's a private driveway.
Harry Trumbull lives on Rainier.
He owns the two.
Oh, yeah, right.
So these are, but the redevelopment of that entire drive has been very interesting.
But of course, this doesn't involve.
No, 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 Harry walks the straight now.
Just to be clear. Yeah, I I was quite surprised at the.
The too long dock, the patio that they've been told to remove.
It seems as though DES is thinking this pretty seriously.
Yeah, I'm delighted to see this. I mean, not that they, these people violate it in such a way, but that DES is paying attention.
Well, of course, it's all the fight base, that's the only reason they know that. You got a lot of, basically, a lot of stewards around the lake that want the game to be played by the rules as well, they should.
That's good.
Well, I mean, if you hire a qualified professional, I mean, we have an individual who does engineering for the town who often does different permits that are related to this. And and it is possible to walk through when you need a permit and do it the right way. So that it's safe and it presents the lake. So there's, there's no excuse. If you can afford to build these things, you can afford to hire an engineer.
Okay.
There's no other business.
I'm hoping we go into that public session in accordance with RSA 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, parentheses, A, parentheses.
I'll set in the.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor.
I.
I would make a motion that we approve the draft of the Enfield agreement discussed.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor.
I.
I.
And I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second that.
Excellent. Is that noise weather? Or is our heating system bothering our?